For everyone who would be so kind as to please stand to read the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart. Jamie?
May you advise that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the sunshine law in the following manner. Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times to Camden Carrier Post on January 4th, 2019, and those on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Romando?
Here.
Ms. Correa?
Here.
Mr. Burrell?
Here.
Mr. Cattrick?
Here. So our first item on the agenda is to nominate and vote on filling the vacancy in Ward Two, let vacant by now preholder Dan O'Connell. So council has received three names that were provided by the Delran Democratic Committee of potential candidates. We've all had a chance to review the resumes for those that submitted a resume, and I would ask if anyone from council would like to make a nomination.
Yes, I do. With that review having been done, I would like to nominate Thomas Lyon for the position.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm not here. Yes, so what we'll do is we will now vote on Resolution 2019-27. This is a resolution of the township for the appointment to temporarily fill the vacancy on township council due to the resignation of Ward Two Councilman Daniel O'Connell. So.
Second.
Jamie?
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Congratulations, Tom Lyon. Tom, if you'd step up, you can bring your family up. And it is our pleasure, we have a dignitary here with us, the President of the State Senate, Stephen Sweeney is here to swear Tom in. Fortunately, he's done this before.
I've done this way too many times. Turn this way, we're taking pictures of him, you see? These guys have a heart, yeah, button and jacket on that too. I state your name.
Aye, Thomas Lyon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the governments established.
To the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of councilman.
Of councilman.
Ward Two.
Ward Two.
Delran.
Delran.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks. I would like to say, I want to thank my family for being here, not only my wife and my daughter, but my Keamster family, which is large and vast, and I do appreciate everybody coming out, and hopefully everything is just like it's supposed to. Hopefully you can read very quickly, Tom, because you have an agenda in front of you.
I've already read it.
Okay. So at this time, we would like, I would like to invite Mayor Parrish and the President of council to come down and make the proclamation presentations to the Delran Bears cheerleaders.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the cheerleading team for another very, very successful year. Congratulations on that. What we're going to do is we're going to break it into a couple categories. We'll first do the members of the cheerleading team, and I'll read that proclamation, because each proclamation for the members, as well as the coaches, is a little bit different. So we'll start out reading the members, and we'll pull out the names after we read the proclamation. For the members of the team, "Whereas the Delran Bears Cheer Squad won a victory at the county level, which guaranteed them a trip to the 2018 Pop Warner National Championship at ESPN Worldwide of Sports in Orlando, Florida; and whereas they were victorious and won the national title; and whereas each member of the Delran Members Cheerleading Squad, whose expertise contributed in making the team victorious; and whereas the team and community recognize that the outstanding and able coaching provided to our young youths, young adults, not only leads to victories, but teaches them the value of teamwork and discipline. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Kenneth Parrish and members of the Delran Town Council extend our congratulations to each member of the cheerleading squad upon obtaining this award, and praise everyone who supported them along their journey to the national title." Congratulations. Okay, can we please have Rachel Bossen come forward?
So.
Are you sure? Flash is still on, that's a long.
Hannah Beistrom. Okay. Angelina DeRosa Menzoni. Congratulations.
Nobody has a flash.
Ashley Hartman. Abigail Miller. Maria Olivia Earl. Luisa Pereira. Manuele Silva. Victoria Sol. And Madison Twist. Okay, now this one is, now we're going to be doing the coaches, that'll be the head coach, the assistant coach, and the junior coaches. We'll read this one, it says, "Whereas the Delran Bears Cheer Squad won a victory at the county level, which guaranteed them a trip to the 2018 Pop Warner National Championship at ESPN Worldwide of Sports in Orlando, Florida; and whereas they are victorious and won the national title; and whereas the team and the community recognize the outstanding and able coaching provided to our young adults, not only leads to victories, but teaches them the value of teamwork and discipline. Now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Kenneth Parrish and member of the Delran Town Council extend our congratulations to the head coach, the assistant coach, and also the junior coaches of the Delran Cheer Squad upon obtaining these awards, and praise everyone who supported them along their journey to the national title." Can I please have up here Suzanne Khan? Okay, the next one, Shannon Bossen. Patricia Warren. Julia Hamlin. Kaline Beistrom. Natalie Hamlin. Natalie's not here. Well, how about aside for her? Hannah Wilson. And one more, one more item I'd like to actually mention is I'd like to recognize Debbie Khan. Debbie has been involved with the cheerleading teams for several years, I won't say how many, but it's been a lot. It's probably over 12 when we spoke about, but I know she's been involved ever since I was even involved with the AD. But I want to recognize Debbie because she always has given so much time and effort, and we really do appreciate residents to get involved with the community, and you definitely have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Great choice. Watch this.
I mean that.
See what happens when you schedule council meetings the same night as the State of the Union? Everybody runs home to watch it. So, next on the agenda would be, as we've talked about, Councilman O'Connell, now preholder of O'Connell, was the Vice President of Council, so we need to fill that spot of Vice President. Do you have any nominations for Vice President of Council?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Tyler Burrell.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Lyon?
As my only vote of the evening, aye.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you very much. Okay, so we're. Gone. So next we have minutes for approval, and we do have. So we have, first we need approval of the minutes for the November 27, 2018 Action Work Session and Close Session Meeting.
So moved.
Second. Who's that? Oh, I'm sorry. My mic went abstain.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Virginia?
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Abstain.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next we have the approval of the minutes for December 4th, 2018, the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Abstain.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next we have the approval of the minutes for the December 11th Action and Work Session Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Abstain.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next we have, there was a typo in the January 2nd reorganization meeting, that we've alerted our township clerk via email with those corrections made, incorrectly listed Virginia as being nominated for Vice President of Council, it was actually Mr. O'Connell at the time. So with that correction, I'll ask for approval of the minutes for January 2nd, 2019 Reorganization Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
And finally, we have the approval of the minutes for January 2nd, 2019 Public Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, we have a couple of ordinances on second reading. First is Ordinance 2019-01, this is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. And because this is on second reading, we'll have a public hearing. This is on this ordinance and this ordinance only, so I'd ask for a motion to go into public for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so for those folks who are new with us tonight, this is a public hearing just for this particular ordinance. If you have a question or comment, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no hands, I'll ask for a motion to come out of public.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, now I'll ask for a motion to approve the Ordinance 2019-01.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
And we're going to do that all over again. So next we have Ordinance 2019-02, this is an ordinance to establish salary ranges for various employees in the township, and regulating the manner of payment of the same. So we have a public hearing for this, and this is on second reading, so I'll ask for a motion to go into public for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, so now once again, we're in a public hearing for Ordinance 2019-02. Anyone has a question or comment, please, it's going to be recognized. Seeing no hands, I'll ask for a motion to come out of public.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, now I'll ask for a motion to approve Ordinance 2019-02.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Guess why? So we have our third and final ordinance on second reading, this is Ordinance 2019-03, and this is a bond ordinance authorizing the acquisition of a dump truck for the township, and authorizing all the monies involved. So as this is a second reading, we have a public hearing, I'll ask for a motion to go into public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, so now we are in our public meeting for Ordinance 2019-03, and just for this ordinance only. Anyone has a question or comment, please raise your hand and be acknowledged. Seeing no hands, I'll ask for a motion to come out of public.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, now I'll ask once again for a motion to approve Ordinance 2019-03.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Now with our resolution agenda, we have Resolution 2019-28, this is a resolution approving totally disabled veterans exemption for Block 120.05, Lot 20.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Resolution 2019-29 is refunding taxes paid in error to Block 118, Lot 2.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2019-30, this is a resolution refunding a duplicate payment for Block 118, Lot C, I'm sorry, Lot 4C 106.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2019-31, this is a resolution authorizing closeout change order and final payment for VMG Group for the municipal building roof replacement project.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2019-32, this is a resolution authorizing a change order number three and the final change order and final payment to CNH Industrial Services, Inc., for the sand filter replacement project.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2019-33, this is a resolution authorizing closeout change order number two and final payment to S. Batata Construction, Inc., for Route 130 sidewalk improvements. I have a motion approved, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
There's more. So next is Resolution 2019-37, this is a resolution approving. I skipped the whole page? I did. I'm trying. Next is Resolution 2019-34, this is refunding police outside employment escrow PD 16-07.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2019-35, this is a resolution refunding property taxes due to added appeal for Block 117.01, Lot 42.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2019-36, this is the appointment of Tanika Johns as municipal tax collector.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2019-37, this is a resolution approving participation with the state of New Jersey in Safe and Secure Communities Program for 2019 administered by the Division of Criminal Justice Department of Law and Public Safety, and the subaward 19-0310, the subaward period of February 1st, 2019, to January 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2019-38, this is a resolution authorizing the 2018 budget transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Shockingly, I shall abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is 2019-39, this is our final resolution, and this is a resolution amending 2019 temporary capital budget.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
And again, I abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next we have ordinances on first reading, actually just two, and this is Ordinance 2019-04, this is a bond ordinance authorizing the reconstruction and repair of various roads in and for the township of Delran, appropriating the sum of $1.2 million, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds or bond anticipation notes for the township, and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1.142, and change $1 million making certain determinations and covenants, and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2019-505, this is an ordinance for the township of Delran establishing Charter 84, Chapter 84 of the Code of the Township of Delran entitled Background Checks.
So moved.
Councilman, can we just refer to that as the ordinance rather than resolution?
Did I say resolution?
Sorry, you might have said resolution.
All right, so let's try that again. Maybe the suit wasn't a good call for this evening. Ordinance 2019-05 is an ordinance of the township of Delran establishing Chapter 84 of the Code of the Township of Delran entitled Background Checks.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
And now I need several motions. First motion, I need a motion authorizing the payment of bills, including all purchases made under the cooperative purchasing agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next, I need a motion accepting the report of the tax collector and township clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Romando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick? Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Next I need a motion accepting the report of the CFO including the January year-to-date revenue report, year-to-date budget report, and the January check register.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Mermando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
And finally, I need a motion granting a mercantile license to LNS Diesel Auto Specialist 203 Carriage Lane and Hudson Group Retail LLC 1810 Underwood Boulevard, Unit 2.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Mermando?
Aye.
Ms. Correa?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Abstain.
Mr. Cattrick?
Aye.
Well played.
Still left you on there, just one last time.
Thanks for being a member, Jamie, thank you.
Next we have reports, starting first with the clerk, Jamie Eggers. Jamie, anything for us?
Just real quick, the next blood drive is February 12, next Tuesday, from 1:30, 6:30 here at the municipal building. If anyone is interested in signing up, they can contact our office.
And anything from our township administrator, Jeff Hatcher? Jeff?
Yes, a couple things. First of all, I just want to notify you that the RFP for Jake's Place has been reissued, it's out, it's on the website, so that will be back due at the end of February. And I just want to point out something in terms of actions, I know council is aware of it, but there were three change orders tonight, resolutions 31, 32, and 33. Usually change orders are a bad thing, all of those change orders were reductions. Change Order 31 was a reduction of $34,685.14, 32 was a reduction of $1,267.29, and Resolution 33 was a reduction of $38,951.15. And then finally, just to point out, Resolution 2019-37, the council authorized this evening to continue on with the Safe and Secure Program, is a grant program that we've been receiving since 1993. It's been $60,000 each one of those years, so it's been a total of $676,000 during that period of time. So it's for the police department for personnel. So it's been a godsend for the township with respect to funding men in that department. That's all I have for this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. And now representing the law firm of Stu Platt, our solicitor, any report, Alan?
Nothing to officially report tonight, council president, just like to congratulate Councilman Lyon on being appointed.
Thank you.
And I'm sure he's going to have a much more productive voting record than you.
Sure he will. Typically, we have representative from the fire commissioners in here with us at our public meeting. Maybe the crowd scared them off, I'm not sure earlier, but I'm sure they'll be returning for our next public meeting. And this is where we, now we have reports from the members of council, and we traditionally start at my far right, so it'll be my pleasure to ask Councilman Tom Lyon from Ward 2 his report for us this evening.
I have no report, just I'd like to say I'm looking forward to this opportunity. I want to thank council for their confidence in me, and I really am looking forward to be a partner in progress with the residents and this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. And representing Ward 3, Councilman Mike Mermando. Mike, anything to say?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate Tom on being appointed and welcome him to council and look forward to working with him.
Thank you, Mike. And representing Ward 1, Virginia Correa, councilwoman, the report this evening. And our newly-elected vice president, Councilman Tyler Burrell. Tyler, anything?
Same thing, I want to congratulate you and welcome you to the team, look forward to working together. Also, thank you freeholder O'Connell for joining us tonight and sat up here, filling your shoes here as vice president, so I thank everybody for that vote of confidence. I really appreciate it and look forward to working with the guys for another year.
Thank you, councilman. And I would just like to echo everyone's sentiments welcoming Tom Lyon to council. I'm sure Tom has served us well on the zoning board, and he will continue to serve the township and the residents in the same manner. Other than that, I have no other reports, so I'll ask if the mayor has any announcements for us this evening?
Yeah, I have a couple. First, I'd like to congratulate Tom Lyons. I will say I think it's a good choice. I met Tom when I first actually ran and stopped at his house, and he seemed like he cared very much about the community and the residents, and I valued that when I met him, and I always remembered that, that's why I supported him being on the zoning board as well. And I'm glad to have you on, Tom, I think you are there for the residents and look forward to working with them.
Thank you.
I also do have one other item, I just wanted to mention that I have reached out to all the river towns, the mayors of the river towns, to discuss the current issues that we're having with the river and flooding, and discuss possible, and the plan is to discuss possible ideas to resolve problems. This is to get a larger presence, having them group together. I think we can then maybe put a little bit more pressure on possibly getting some state and federal funding, so I'm looking forward to hopefully working with these other mayors and getting something to progress in that direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor. And now at this time I'd ask for a motion to go into public.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries.